I know.
Ladies and gentlemen, I love the energy in the room. This is very exciting, and I do want to apologize to our colleagues and our folks in the audience that we are a half an hour, now 38 minutes behind schedule. So I humbly apologize for our delays, but we were in a session in which we, the last few minutes, spent a lot, spent some time about a decision, a very important decision, that Ms. Darinak Kofax is going to make a motion about.
Madam Chair, Madam Chair.
Oh, first, I have to say, I apologize. You're correct. So before we do that, in order to comply with Section 2.23712D of the Code of Virginia, it is necessary for the Board to certify that since the Fairfax County School Board convened a closed meeting on June 27, 2019, to the best of each member's knowledge, only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements, and only such public business matters as were identified in the motion convening the closed meeting were heard, discussed, or considered by the Board during the closed meeting. Do I have a motion? Motion made by Mr. Moon, seconded by Ms. McLaughlin. All those in favor, even those getting a cup of coffee, please let me know if you are certifying the closed session. Yes, so we ha, and those opposed? Those abstaining. Abstain, abstention by Ms. Hines and Mr. Wilson, that motion carries. We will now have a very important motion made by Ms. Darinak Kofax.
I move to approve the appointment of Nardus King as the Assistant Superintendent, Region III, effective July 1, 2019.
Seconded by Ms. Corbett Sanders. All those in favor. And that is unanimous. It's so exciting. Would you like to make that announcement, Dr. Brabran? Yes, Dr. King will be coming back to the whole Board and speaking on the 25th of July, and we look forward to not only her leadership in the region, but her vision that she'll share with us on the 25th of July. So thank you very much, Dr. King.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Now, Ms. Amash, I apologize for having you wait so long, but we are very excited and pleased to hear the results of the Human Resources Advisory Committee, their annual report. And so if you would like to present your presentation, we look forward to it.
Sure. Thank you. We're really excited to present to you all. I want to make sure I recognize, you know, Helen, Sean, and Michelle, who've been incredibly helpful to us throughout our work in a challenging charge, and of course, the committee members who are in the back joining us as well. So to begin, you know, we'll start off by giving just a brief overview of the committee, you know, what our role was. Then we'll talk a little bit about the literature and what it tells us about retention and some of the best practices that exist. Then going into FCPS specifically, you know, what the data shows us about the trends that are, that exist. And then finally into our recommendations, which have been broken down into four categories. I hope that, you know, throughout the presentation, if folks can refer to both the slides and the report, and I'll direct you to when, to do either. So starting off with our slides. So the committee, of course, as you all know, was charged, you know, with one of our strategic objectives, of course, in supporting a premier workforce, in trying to understand what retention looks like in the school system. This is, you know, this, the year, this is kind of a two-year report. The first year, we didn't have a defined charge, but we, this year, kind of looked at retention and broke it down into four subject areas that we look forward to talking to you about. The members of the committee are on the screen. Melanie Marion of Hunter Mill and I co-chaired the committee this year. So this graphic is just a kind of an overview, starting, you know, mental activity, but it's something that represents the answers from a question that appeared on an engagement survey in 2017, 2018. And, you know, it's clear that our teachers and what they're feeling, that overwhelmed is one of the words that appears most, of course, you know, the size of the, of the word represents how frequently it appeared in the surveys. So the question for us was, all right, well, how are we going to support our teachers and ensure that we are facilitating that premier workforce? Okay, so, so just to point out, of course, I mean, as we all know, it's an effort to focus on what factors encourage or discourage teachers from staying. So, you know, and the literature showed us that primarily, when we think of this topic, you know, we might think, all right, well, teacher pay, you know, might be important, or resources, and whether a teacher is able to afford to live near their school. Of course, that's a critical factor we shouldn't neglect, but it actually, the data showed us that it was other factors that were much more significant, and those primarily being culture, so school climate, and then leadership, and what, you know, relationships with principals and assistant principals looked like with teachers. So this is just a summary of existing data and literature review, you know, kind of reinforcing what I just mentioned, and pointing out factors that significantly affect teacher retention and exit as well. So when we look at, you know, low, lower income, poverty, for example, those are, you know, the listed factors right there that we see, and this particular dataset is a literature review that evaluates Virginia statewide. We had the opportunity to work with researchers at, who worked, you know, in conjunction with the Secretary of Education, to look at Virginia broadly, and then Fairfax County more specifically, and these are some of the things we saw, and these were consistent in many ways with what we see in FCPS, particularly when it comes to, thank you, you know, lower-income students, poverty, and we saw that on, you know, the, the free and reduced meals, Title I were the metrics, and then ELL, English as a second language, were variables that showed that. Okay. And why does this matter? Just to kind of, you know, reinforce the idea that the literature actually shows us direct impacts of teacher retention, teacher exit, on these three factors. You know, cost is obvious, obvious to all of us, there's training and hiring involved, but that it does impact directly student achievement and teacher morale in, in their work, whether teachers are leaving or not. So again, you know, from, from, from what we heard from both the, you know, the unions, what we saw from the research, both statewide and literature reviews, and then in our county, these are some of the, the values that teachers, you know, sought to, to see respected in the workplace. All right, so what did HREC do for the past two years, and what have we been up to to try to address the challenges that exist? So we, I mentioned, we did a literature review, we've looked at Virginia data and Fairfax County data, insofar as it was available, there's not much. We looked at engagement surveys over the past several years. We sorted out, sorted through charts. So when we started, we were kind of handed a spreadsheet of numbers, and it was in print, and it was really, you know, a thick packet. We tried, you know, we sorted through various variables and tried to look for trends. We had members of our committee who contributed significantly, and I want to make sure I recognize them, Steve Fumano, who looked through that dataset, and Leonard, who's sitting right next to me, who did an R-squared regression. He happens to be a math teacher, and we're very excited to have his contribution. You know, we worked with ORC, who produced a report for us, which is an appendix to the report. We spoke with leadership, you know, some of whom, Dr. Zuluaga was here, Dr. Ivy, Mr. Mark Greenfelder, and others. And then we also spoke with stakeholders. So we invited our, you know, the heads of the three unions and, and collected their feedback to bring us to where we are now, where we broke down four categories of recommendations that we hope to present to you. So, you know, in looking ahead, where are we in Fairfax County specifically on teacher retention? If we look at the data right now, you know, if we look at this graph, we might think, well, do we have a teacher retention problem? It's not necessarily clear. What are we referring to? You know, in, in the best practices of the, the Crete School of Education at UVA was suggesting that, how do we even define that? I mean, you know, obviously, for good teachers, teacher, the ideal number is 100%. For teachers who might need more support, maybe it's less, or teachers who aren't a good fit, maybe it's 0%. So what's our reference point? This data obviously shows us that, it, it interrogates the question, all right, do we have a teacher retention problem? And actually, as a committee, we toyed with that a little bit and realized that, that's not really an accurate description of, of the situation, but more so, so when we, so when we look at this, it's not necessarily helpful or indicative of where we're at. So instead, if we look at this slide, we look at, so these are, you know, top, achieving top offending, if you will, schools on retention data. And you'll notice there are significant disparities. So just, you know, take a moment to look at the numbers, upwards of a third in a school in comparison to 5%, of course. So that raises the question, why, you know, where, how did this come to be? When we sorted through data, we saw certain factors that tended to predict, you know, the difference in these rates. So we saw, you know, and the engagement surveys as well were very indicative of, of the situation. And as I mentioned, you know, starting off, a lot of it went back to school culture, climate, and leadership. What was the relationship like between teachers and leadership? How did they feel about them? What were they reporting? You know, how, what did trust look like in that relationship? So in our own sorting, we saw, you know, Title I and FRM being significant factors, poverty. We saw English as a second language, which again was consistent with the state data. We saw principal turnover, actually, indicated a slight trend. Special education also, you know, the, the higher percentage of students with special, of special needs tended to align with teacher exit. And then, you know, teachers who were starting, so less experienced teachers are much more likely to leave. So that's, you know, raises a question, all right, how can we support our new teachers and our new hires? Then when we add to it the R-squared regression that was done by Leonard, we looked at mobility rate, showed, you know, some indication, and even more strongly, physical offenses actually occurring in the schools. So that's an interesting question, I mean, again, related to school climate, and absenteeism were things that contributed to retention and exit. And then finally, the ORC report that we were able to review, and that is an appendix to the report you guys have, you know, showed us the work environment, students, or teacher engagement, again reinforced the idea that new teachers are more likely to leave, mobility, English language learning, and interestingly enough, being a male, you're more likely to stay. But insofar as what's useful, again, a lot of indicators of unique programs that exist in the schools, climate and culture, and then relationship with leadership. So I'll pause to take any questions right now, and then we can go into specific recommendations and the, and the various categories that.
Actually, the way that we typically do this, Ms. Amash, is that you go ahead and present the whole report, and then we take questions at the end.
Sure.
Okay.
All right. So, all right, so looking at, this is the point when I think we can look at the report. So the, the presentation actually just summarizes the key points that were derived from a more detailed explanation in the report itself. So our four goals, ultimately, so essentially, we broke down, and, you know, in finding what all the recommendations were going to be, we looked at four areas where we can improve. So one was best practices in HR, you know, further supporting our teachers, ensuring they feel trusted, and that they're a part of the school, their, the school community they inhabit. The second was disparities, you know, as the data just showed you, that there are inconsistencies, so how can we target and address those? The third, which wasn't expected, was in our work and in engaging with whatever available data existed, our requests of staff, made it obvious that we need to put in place some data collection and usage mechanisms that might streamline or more systematically, you know, offer results and review and, and, you know, allow that analysis to occur, to inform, you know, policy or procedure. And then finally, our own HR, HREC process, and how we can support the committee to do better work in the future. Okay, so when we look at the first goal, employee best practices, there are a number of things we can get into. The report is very detailed. I hope, you know, everyone reads it diligently. We, we did spend a lot of time thinking through, you know, the ultimate recommendation, what does that specifically look like? In the hopes that next year, when someone else is before you presenting the recommendations, we can review and see, all right, on these specific metrics, you know, where, where did, what have we achieved, where are we still falling behind? So you'll notice, you know, the, page five, please? Yeah, there we go. Thank you. And then finally, the rationale. So backing it, you know, with the data that we, the data that we saw, reviewed, and then our own observations from the work that we were doing. So if we look at best practices, engagement survey questions show us that the highest discrepancy between low and high turnover schools is based on communication with principals and leadership. And, you know, there were several questions that indicated this, whether they were related to trust, staff morale, relationship, whether they trust the, you know, leadership to be acting in the ways they speak. Those were things that we noticed were trends and discrepancies amongst low turnover and high turnover schools. You know, as you can see in the report, you know, almost 40% disagree or strongly disagree with the idea that staff morale is high in their school, and that was more so the case in high turnover than, than it was in low turnover schools. Overall, if we're to summarize best practices, we see, you know, the, the idea, three things. One is the sense of respect and belonging that teachers feel, the fact that their input is trusted. Again, consistently from unions and from data, we saw that it wasn't even necessarily pay, while that, of course, would help and is actually an indicator of respect. It was more, you know, these, these softer, more subjective factors that were involved. So a teacher's sense of, you know, whether their ideas are solicited, whether people are, that leadership responds to their needs and requests. Another thing that actually emerged, which we would encourage as an evaluation and study of, and we list that here, is quantification of unencumbered teacher time. So, you know, what does that look like countywide? Where are the discrepancies? Are we compensating our teachers for the amount of time they're putting in? Because all of that, again, and what are the expectations from leadership of teachers, you know, without compensation or recognition? So that's one broader umbrella of teachers and their morale, their sense of respect in the, in the building. Of course, we provide recommendations like, you know, in ga, having, ensuring, you know, facilitating teacher input mechanisms throughout, in all schools, ensuring that kind of consistency and standardizing that. The other category of concern that we came to provide these recommendations on is what mobility and review look like in our schools. There are discrepancies across the county, and we were looking at, all right, well, when a teacher is faced with an opportunity to, to correct themselves, or is disciplined in some way, what does that look like? Are there peer review mechanisms, perhaps? That's one thing we're recommending can be put in place. There have been reports, you know, for example, from the unions, that they sense there are inconsistencies with how people are promoted. So, you know, transparency on those things. All of these recommendations are specifically delineated, but that's a common theme. What does it look like when a teacher is corrected? Is that restorative, or is it punitive? And again, how are they promoted, and what avenues and opportunities are there for them, and is there transparency and consistency in that? And finally, in the best practices category, is avenues of recourse and reporting, any, you know, incidents or situations where the teachers felt disrespected, or that their rights were violated? So there was, you know, we heard from our unions that teachers have a sense that they, that their, you know, feedback, or that their critique, or concern, or complaints aren't necessarily addressed. So that's, that's, you know, in addition to the data and, and climate surveys, what we suggested as well, having some form of anonymity, ensuring, and, and we know, and we recognize, staff really, you know, gave us a sense of the effort that's being put in to ensure that teachers have those reporting systems in place. We want, you know, it might be worth looking into that disconnect where staff are providing these opportunities, but teachers remain in a place where they feel there's, there's a threat, or that there may be retaliation. So those are the three general buckets of recommendations that we have on best practices. Of course, there's a long list of them, and we summarize that on the top of each category. So again, first goal, employing best practices for teacher retention. The second is related to disparities. So how do we address some of the disparities in our retention outcomes? What are our recommendations in those regards? And the importance of this can't be understated, because, you know, as, as the report will show you, and the various studies we referred to in the report demonstrate, these have direct impact on student achievement. So when we look at it, all right, we said, we realize it's not a global problem. Again and again, both the data and the, the conversations we've had have shown us that leadership and climate tend to be where they're, where, tend to be aligned with areas where we see these disparities. We, I listed some of the variables, they're also, you know, listed for you in the report. Our recommendation ultimately is thinking about, and I'll accredit Tiffany Price on our committee for this idea, organizing some form of a project momentum for this that focuses on employees, and, and keeping in mind that employees are not just teachers, but also custodians, cafeteria workers. So, so that's our ultimate recommendation for our second, you know, studying and addressing disparities in retention outcomes, second goal. And then finally, or no, not finally, but second to last, our third goal is restructuring data collection and usage. This one was a particular challenge for the committee. We, you know, in our pursuit of information, for, you know, requesting regression analyses of data, we've, we came to the conclusion that there, we, we can do better in structuring a clear data process that is on a timeline and that is cyclical. So how are we reviewing countywide the various, really, you know, the, the various metrics that come out of our schools, and thinking of it from a problem-solving perspective as to how we can address it and, and improve on it? So it, it seemed to us there was no particular language in place, or system in place that exists, so our recommendation is potentially looking into a chief data scientist, or some kind of office where that's, that information is housed and processed, and, and then, you know, analyzed. So rather than a committee going through spreadsheets and trying to find trends, having a formal regression analysis done by an expert that provides recommendations on predictive factors so that we can address them. And then, the, the, the important thing about this too, is that there has to be collaboration. So it's not only the quantitative aspect of it, but then what's the communication like between that office and the RASs, to then think, all right, how are we going to implement based, or what are we going to propose or change based on the, the numbers we're seeing? So, you know, ORC obviously is a great start, it's, the intention of, of that kind of analysis exists, but having a streamlined way and a timeline with, with check-ins, for example. So, you know, we start off the year by just starting to study what's going on. Then perhaps there's a time, there's a, there's a time marker where the RASs meet with data experts who are already monitoring this and provide those recommendations. That kind of timeline, you know, systemic expectation would provide a lot of insight into this challenge, and would lead us in a path to address these challenges before they become so drastic in what we saw of like 5% versus 30% discrepancy. And finally, our last goal, which is related to the process of our own committee, is to establish an HREC process. So of course, we know that this is a newer committee. We were thrilled to, you know, take that on and to try to face the challenge optimistically. But certainly, we want to make sure that the next committee is situated for success, to have a clearly defined and specific charge, you know, early on, to have staff support, to have an understanding of best practices for a committee, what the process tends to be, and then to, to follow our own guidance manual in ensuring that the right people are at the table. So, you know, we had a Tina Williams, I'm not sure if she's still here, I wanted to recognize her as well, who consistently attended our meetings, yeah, head of FCFT, completely out of her own voluntary will. That's an opportunity for us, to have people at the table, rather than, you know, appointed folks kind of opining, or trying to, to understand what's going on. And certainly, you know, input from people who are on the ground was incredibly valuable, like Leonard and Howard, and, and teachers that were on our committee. So that's, that's, you know, a summary of, of how we look forward to better retention outcomes. I think, you know, we do obviously a great job here in FCPS, and we have several things that if we just tweaked and put in place, can really make us at the top and as a trendsetter in the, you know, on that strategic objective of a premier workforce. So, you know, we're excited to answer any questions and look forward to hearing your feedback.
Thank you very much, Ms. Amash. So we have three questions so far, or three people that would like to speak. I'll start with Megan McLaughlin, and our procedure, just so you know, is that we give each board member up to three minutes. We, if they are in dialogue with you, we will stop the clock so that you can speak, and then we pick up again, okay? And so we have Megan McLaughlin, followed by Elizabeth Schultz and Pat Hines.
So I first of all want to emphasize that as, having been the liaison for the school board to this committee, I want to personally express my gratitude to the Human Relations Advisory Committee members. Your work was outstanding, having seen how the sausage gets made, and that I was there for, with you in the beginning, and how did we wrap our arms around work you had done and started a year ago, and trying to find a path forward with this report, and how to take such a big topic and really distill it into this outstanding report. And I do hope that my colleagues will have a chance to spend more time, because it is so dense. It's, I think, one of the most dense reports we've gotten this year, but so full of vital information. So I, first of all, want to thank you for your incredible dedication. Secondly, I want to express my appreciation, Dr. Brabran, for Dr. Helen Nixon, who was the staff liaison. She and her team, Sean McDonald and Michelle Cross, were outstanding in their support to this committee. Helen was deeply entrenched in this work from the beginning to the end, and I really felt that that also helped this committee in its success in what you've all presented here this evening. So I have actually said I would be more than thrilled to continue working with HREC going forward, because this is only its second year. And I also want to compliment you all that you were prudent enough to wait last year and say, you know what, let's do justice to this topic, we're not going to rush a report from last year, and the culmination of two years' worth of work is really extraordinary. I also want to emphasize in one of the recommendations about membership, colleagues, you should look at the attendance sheets so you can see how your appointees did, but the committees were averaging at only eight out of the 12 school board members being at those meetings, and that's just really very small. Secondly, our strategic governance manual talks about the additional members who should be serving on this, and so I want to make sure there's an emphasis next year right away that our teacher association representatives are there as full members on the committee as we had outlined originally, and that we also get industry experts. The Society for Human Resource Management is actually based in Alexandria, we should make an effort to get that. I'm going to end up needing a go-back, because there's so much more that I do want to say on this, but the thing that I, I want to spotlight, and then I'll go back to in, in my remarks later, is this idea of a project momentum for our schools that are most challenged for retention cannot be understated. And so I look forward to bringing that forward in, in my go-back opportunity, because I think it is almost the most essential nugget of what's being presented here. We've had great success with turning around our schools on student achievement, and we can do the same thing with success in turning around schools where you have, as you've noted, a 30% turnover rate. a 30% turnover rate as opposed to 5%, depending on where you are in the division. So bravo again to the entire committee, and it was a pleasure being able to serve as your liaison.
It's a pleasure working with you.
Ms. Evans, followed by Ms. Hines.
Well, first of all, thank you for an excellent report. This is very detailed and I appreciate that, so, and thank you, Ms. Amesh, for your excellent presentation as well. And Mr. Bumbaka, thank you for serving as my appointee and for your perfect attendance record to Ms. McLaughlin's point. I did notice that. I have a couple of comments, and then I also wanted to, to ask a couple of questions here. The conclusion, if I understood you, that the most challenged schools have the highest turnover. If it's FRM, I'm so glad you mentioned mobility. You know, that's something that we don't pay as much attention to as we should, in my view, you know, and I assume you're talking about mobility of the students when you talk about high mobility. One question that I did have was if you were able to cross-reference those schools that were both very high needs, high challenges, but yet had high marks for communication and leadership and trust, did that show, if you were able to do it, you know, did that show a significant difference? So that's, that's my one question there. But the other thing is on page eight of the report, you talk about incentivizing hiring teachers in, in these high-need schools, the ones with high FRM, high mobility, high special needs, and if you had any, and again, because I haven't had a chance to read every word of the report, maybe it's in here, what sort of incentivizing did you have in mind? Because I do think that that's a particularly critical piece in terms of both getting the teachers to, to apply at the highest need schools, but, but also to stay there with all of the challenges that they see. So with that, that I, I would like to get the answers to those questions, and then I, I think I'm done then.
Okay. Thank you for your questions. So on the first one, unfortunately, we didn't have the opportunity. It was definitely floated around. It was something we wanted to do, but it was so voluminous and, you know, we obviously limited resources and time, but it's something that we do recommend be part of the, you know, in goal C, be part of an exploration, because we certainly think it would be insightful in terms of seeing what best practices exist despite the challenges or despite the odds. For your second, go ahead, Leonard, if you want to add.
And I just wanted to add that what we tried to do with the data is to take a look at the, the types of things that you would expect to impact retention. And we were able to find trends, as Abra was, was pointing out, that indeed did that. But what was even more useful for us, we thought as a tool and for the system, was to be able to then find the stu, find the schools, find the sites that were exceeding expectations under those circumstances so that you're in a high-needs, high-intensity environment and still beating the curve. So with a system as large as Fairfax, it's very difficult to manage everything this, but the data analysis, given these types of trends, counting it for that, could lead, could enable management by exception, take and look at the great stories that are out there, or perhaps identifying the areas that need, that need more attention.
So Leonard, you're saying that that would be something for the committee to pursue as a follow-up next year, to, to look for those pockets of excellence and see what they're doing?
We, we had a limited set of data, and some of it only went to 2016, so there's newer data. ORC started to, to work with that. The, it was, it was a poke at, at that. I think something more systematic can be done. It goes beyond the capability of our committee to do that. We would like to be a part of the discussion and setting that up, but we're really not set up to do that.
Have our HR folks. And then the other question about, if you had specifics about incentivizing.
Yeah, so we actually, there are actually divisions that pay more based on need and, you know, likelihood of leaving the school. So that's a potential idea. It wouldn't be the first time, it wouldn't be too radical, but, but there are others. So specifically recruiting for diversity, including bonus like social and emotional training, that's something that actually was consistent with what teachers would want and is something we don't necessarily do. I know Dr. Braybrand is thinking about it and has talked about it. So that's another way we can incentivize teachers. We've also included recognition of, you know, holidays, things like that for more diverse localities that would promote a better school culture. But, but really, I mean, overall, pay is worth thinking about. Again, it's something that other school divisions do, where, you know, especially when it comes to special needs, ELL, I mean, you know, particular areas that show more disparity and more challenges, and then hire, encouraging hiring of underrepresented communities that may be more tolerant to those kinds of challenges.
So I, I appreciate that list, and I do think that this is something that it's, it's time that we did consider a number of these things, so I, I hope that, that we will do so. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Hines?
Well, thank you all. It's, it's not surprising for a committee that started two years ago, brand new, without much of a sense, I think, at least from my perspective, of exactly what it was going to do. And so you've had two years to look at a topic as large as retention. So it's not surprising that we ended up with so much to work with. But that's kind of where my questions are. One question, I'll just ask them and then you can answer. One is, have you given any thought to next year's charge for the committee? That's first. And then secondly, looking at your recommendations, I mean, you've got the last, I think it's the slide 14 where you have, says superintendent will direct staff two, and then you've got one, you know, three ideas there, right? That sounds sort of, you know, manageable anyway, but then I look at the report and I see, I mean, you've got four goals, and I'll just take the top, the first three, which are not about the committee but about the work of HR, right? And Goal A has eight sub-goals and 47 bullets. Goal B has six sub-goals and 30 bullets. And Goal C has seven sub-goals and 27 bullets. So I guess my question for the committee and for Dr. Braybrand is how do we make this strategic? Because there is no way that staff is going to be able to bite all of this off anytime soon, right? Unless there are natural ways that the work blends together and things we've already started. I mean, I would like as board member to know exactly what it is we're asking you to do.
Well, I'm going to let Dr. Nixon afterward make a few remarks, but what I would say is, as I've learned the second year of this process, this is time for us to listen to the advisory groups and take their ideas, then come back and have that staff response. I think there is a lot of meaty things in here, but we have to prioritize. The back to the overwhelmed is not just something that our teachers feel, it's something that our folks across our system feel. We have to look at which are the ones on here that can move the needle the most, particularly around the metrics already established in our strategic plan, and retention is one of those metrics. So I don't know if Dr. Nixon, obviously she's been spending more time, may have a few. I would look first at the last slide that had the three number ones, is where I would probably start, but I would want to talk to Dr. Nixon and staff a little bit more, and Dr. Nixon, you may have some additional comments.
Right. So our discussions at the HREC meetings were so robust and lots of really kind of amazing ideas, right, and opportunities for us to figure out, how would we go about prioritizing? I think the project momentum philosophy and idea that Ms. McLaughlin referenced, I think there are ways to kind of use that framework to guide some of these, I guess, I'll call them the bullet points and the ideas, but maybe kind of using that philosophy as a framework to begin with. And when we think about the charge for next year, certainly that will be in conversation with the, the school board member who is assigned to the HREC. But I think a lot of that is trying to identify those things that are manageable, the things that the staff can take on, you know, in, in addition to the, the things that the HR staff is already doing. But we also noted that there has to be more dovetailing of the work of HR with the other departments, the other units of, of the gatehouse. And so, you know, we're all responsible for retention, we're all responsible for, for recruiting, we're all responsible for making sure that we are treating people respectfully under the caring culture philosophy, and having that kind of universal ownership of all of this. And we know we can't do our very best work without making sure that we are in sync with our region office. We know that we have to make sure that we're having pointed conversations with our colleagues in the special education office. They need to know what we're seeing on the recruiting side, and we want them to know, we want to know what they're seeing on their side. Sometimes it can feel like a very loosely coupled system where we're, we're doing our work very transactionally in HR, but there are things happening at the school level that we need to know about. So if anything has come out of this, is this, this need for us to kind of improve and increase the communication within our offices, and certainly the work of ORC. How do we leverage that? So if we don't have a chief data scientist, if that's not going to happen in September, let us say, how can we leverage what we have in ORC to do more pointed research and use what we've discovered and uncovered in these conversations to do that?
So thank you. So the question of the charge for next year then, it sounds like it hasn't been developed yet, but the idea would be to use next year's charge to sort of make this strategic, to say, okay, we're not going to open up the whole book again, right? We're going to say we found this, we've made these recommendations, here's what we're, what we are asking our advisory committee to help staff with, to help the school board, help staff with, you know, which, which parts of this work, you know, are strategically most important. And so if, if, if the members of the committee have any ideas about the charge for next year, I would also ask, since it, it would be really helpful for the school board to have a look at that charge with some time to think about it before we have to vote on it, which is our last meeting in July, is that right, Madam Chair? We'll be voting on the charges at the end of July. So if you had any thoughts, might help us tonight to start thinking about it.
Yeah, do you want to go ahead? If I may, I mean, part of what we're trying to identify is that the data infrastructure, for us as a committee at minimum, and perhaps beyond that, wasn't in place to inform a direction or a clear direction where we can provide recommendations on something very tangible. So what, in my imagination of what a charge would be, perhaps if we're able to provide the resources and the analysis necessary to actually look at ways we can respond to the disparities. So, you know, when, when we look at retention broadly, you know, we, we mentioned things that are best practices, ways to accentuate what we're doing, but maybe stopping the bleeding is more important, obviously more urgent. So if we have the analysis that can really point us in FCPS, where are those disparities and why are they happening, then I would, you know, imagine that committee can then begin to recommend, well, how do we respond to that? You know, how do we help teachers who work in special ed? Like what do we, what do we offer them so that they don't exit? Or English language learners, you know, teachers who are supporting them, how do we support them not to exit? Once we can identify those predictors in a way that's, you know, organized and not just us kind of shooting in the dark, then I think we can provide that charge, specifically addressing those variables that emerge from that research.
And, and all of those points really are, address things that we as a committee recognized would need more work. We would need some more time to talk about that, but at the same time, as Dr. Braybrand said, there's, with this much presented, there's really an opportunity for Dr. Braybrand and, and the senior leadership to go ahead and start parsing this out and start developing that. One of the things that, if there are other human resource concerns that each one of us brought, bring to the table of, of concerns, we don't want to just be a retention committee. We don't want to follow, we don't want to lose track of what's going on, we don't want to take our eye off the ball, but we don't want this to be the singular focus of, of what we do. And so perhaps it might be appropriate for Dr. Braybrand and senior staff to go ahead and take a look at how to incorporate this while we're working with other issues related to human resources.
Ms. Keys-Gamar.
Thank you for the excellent report. I do, I appreciate your comments about becoming focused purely on retention. I think it's a significant issue. We recently started with the help of Dr. Nixon, looking at, you know, some of the separations and what, what that looks like, and I've been concerned about that disaggregated information. And so I'm wondering if some of this information is a part of our profile that we're putting out with Ms. Loveglass, and if, if maybe this just begins to become a part of what we regularly report to everyone? The scorecard, yes, yes, so that it's not, you know, new every year, but it's just what, what we look at. And I'm particularly interested in that disaggregated information and whether there's a correlation between perhaps if we have a higher number of terminations or separations or a lack of retention where we have a, a less diversity in our schools, whether there's some correlation there. And so I would like to see if perhaps we can make this a regular part of what we look at and work on. The other thing is, you know, I'd like to see how we can tie the information that we're bringing from this kind of a report, and we know that we need a, a healthy culture in our schools, and how we tie that into our professional development and making sure that we're getting that information to our RASs and including that in, I know we're already in the process of bringing fidelity to how we, using our RASs and our executive principals to bring consistency to all of our schools. And so I hope that this information will feed that. And of course, identifying those best practices. So while we're focusing on, on retention, I'd, I'd love to see those star schools, and I don't, I know that, at least I couldn't see it in mine, I tried to get it printed out, and I'm trying to make it bigger, it hadn't got big enough yet. So I'm wondering if those, those schools are, are identified anywhere and what those practices are that are causing them to overcome.
Yeah, we didn't identify them, but they're available through staff, so you're right that they're not there.
Okay, okay. So I'd like, I, I think the biggest thing I'd like to do is see, in terms of the charge, I'd like to be able to see how we can tie the training to those, these things that we're finding, and I'll, I'll address the rest on, on a go back. Thank you.
Yeah, I, I wanted to just touch on the two, two first points you mentioned, the, the data dashboard. We, we suggested having something like that, both for purposes of transparency. That actually helps with retention as well because teachers feel that there's a sense of accountability. So that's something we recommended for that reason. And the second point on diversity, we did actually explore that, it was a personal interest of mine, and we, the data's inconsistent, you know, in some areas you see it impacting and others you don't. The reports from the unions, that it certainly matters, obviously. So we recommend support teams. That was actually a recommendation that emerged from the unions themselves that help teachers resolve some of their own, or, or have a shared experience. So the data shows us that shared experience increases retention, a sense of belonging and trust amongst peers and common understanding. So that's, that's something that we would recommend to address that point as a starting point, of course.
And I'd like to add, at one of our HREC meetings, late winter, I think, early spring, Dr. Ivy and Dr. Zuluaga joined us, and one of the things that was mentioned was that in this time of the year, in the school improvement planning phases, administrative teams and principals are having conversations about, I don't know if they're calling them necessarily climate goals, but they are looking at the, the data points and integrating best practice into their school improvement planning. So I know that it's, it's, this is at the forefront of, I think, a lot of the coaching and mentoring conversations that the region assistant superintendents and the executive principals are having with their admin teams as they're in this SIP planning process.
Yeah, and, and finally, I mean, this, this point reminds me of another thing that I'd be remiss not to mention that's included in the report, but we didn't talk about, which was, part of the, the concern with trust and what we saw in the engagement surveys is a concern about some level of administrative bullying that occurs, and that tends to be reported, there, there are reports that are consistent with the concern you raised. So, so that's something we want to pay attention to, and that lends itself to the recommendation that we really hope is taken seriously about finding reporting mechanisms that teachers
I think I had 18 seconds on there. I can't get it back. Can I buy it back? Well, I just, I will say anecdotally, in speaking to, you know, some students, I'm sorry, some of our staff members in schools where perhaps they represent one or two people, they represent the diversity. Not only is that a lonely place to be in, but I think that we need to have a mechanism, as you said, of support. Because I always feel that those people feel rather tenuous in their position, like they're holding on, they realize that they're needed, but they, there, there's a desire to, to just leave and go someplace where they feel less isolated.
No question. And, and one more thing on that, I would highly recommend, something that wasn't available to us as members of the public, was the explicit exit survey, you know, the, the points when teachers can actually provide that input. And I would recommend, as a school board, you guys look into that because it may reveal some of those things. Obviously, we couldn't, you know, review it or provide it publicly because it's, it'll reveal identities and whatnot, but that, that's a place where I, I mean, we suspect that as a committee may have some of that.
Thank you, Ms. Keys-Gamarra. I gave you more than your 14 seconds back. Yeah, but I stopped it just to make it look like you only took 19. Just teasing you. Okay. I have Ms. Darinak Kovacs followed by Ms. Strauss.
Thank you all for this very robust report and for all the time you put into it. It's, it shows, and we really appreciate that. I do think, as Ms. Hines talked about, you know, when we look at the charge for next year, because there's so many recommendations, maybe we can come through and prioritize some of those, and the charge can come out from some of those as to which, which would be areas of further exploration because there's lots of good ideas there. So thank you. One thing that has always been, should we do it, shouldn't we do it? Historically, we have talked a lot about incentivizing teachers. We have held focus groups on the eight years that I've been on the board. And, you know, maybe that's something we can look at again. We, rather than go into the whys and wherefore's, but we chose not to do it before. And there, there may be better ideas now as to, perhaps it, it would, it would be something that we should do in some of our heart to manage schools. But I'll tell you, one of the reasons we chose not to do it during the last round when we kind of intensively looked at it was, you know, if you go into a school where it works well, and it has all of those indicators, it has high poverty, it has high mobility, it has a high percentage of kids who may be new to the community, new to the country, if you get a team in there, you can never see that when you walk in that building. You can look at a data sheet, but you walk into that building with great leadership, with teachers that don't want to leave, and they work those 10-plus hour days, and, and they are thrilled about it. And how we can replicate that, that's why I love the idea of the project momentum thing. How does that model, why is that model working? What combination of approaches makes that, that school work with the same data points at another school where the retention rate is not as high and it's not working, and people are like, oh, this isn't the place for me? So, you know, I think, you know, when you talk about incentivizing teachers, there's different ways to do it, not just monetarily, but, but different ways. And maybe there's things that we can look at there. And finally, I guess this is for Dr. Nixon. On page nine of the presentation report, if we can go to that, not this report, the presentation, this is the report.
The actual briefing.
The briefing, yes, yes, yes. No, page nine? Did I have the wrong page? It's where, the disparities? Okay.
Do you want here?
This, that's, this one? Yes, thank you. Dr. Nixon, I have, so while I am concerned for the reasons I just spoke of earlier and the reasons you all outlined about the disparity in these numbers from school A to school T, you know, just a, a quick, trying to remember the data, isn't like, I think NEA reports that 50% is the, you know, 50% of new teachers leave within the first five years? So, so even at T, which isn't as good as A, we're still, still doing an okay job? Is that a, a correct number that I'm remembering?
So I, I cannot speak specifically to the 50% of NEA, but I can certainly look that up for us. But as, I think, Abrah, and one of the things that we talked about, the Goal III report, was that we do have, at 93%, a high retention rate. And I think the, the bigger piece of this is looking at those pockets where we do see schools that might be struggling with that, and what can we do in terms of intervention to help identify and get in there and kind of unpack and examine what's going on? So I think part of it is making sure that we're applying caring culture across the board, making sure that those schools where we see these, you know, K through T, do the teachers feel like there's a, a platform for their voice to be heard? And there, there, as we've said, there are a number of reasons why the, the turnover happens. And what we're trying to do, I think, what we're trying to kind of unpack in all of this work is no gotchas, no, you know, blame game here. It's, there are so many difficult things that present themselves in a school. We know that each school has a unique story. And, and what we want to make sure is the teachers and the leadership teams there have the tools that they need to kind of look at these things. And how, how can we most effectively, in HR, in the region office, on the instructional side of the house, how do we all come together to acknowledge what those things are and how we can help one another see those things through? Because again, we're not, it's not bleeding teachers, but it, it is where we are losing them and where we might be losing really great teachers who have felt frustrated, or where we have felt that we're losing teachers who feel isolated. Those are the things that we're trying to wrap our, kind of our, our collective thinking around.
Absolutely, yeah. And I did look it up, so it was, it's a little bit older data, it's like six years old, but it, it does say that, the 50%. Yes. So we're doing a little bit better, even in some of our most challenging environments.
I just wanted to add too, that just a first look at the data, this is five-year teacher turnover average for all teachers, whereas that data refers to teachers in their first five years. So the numbers won't match up quite as much. The, the other thing is that when we look at these numbers, these are just the gross numbers, but they don't really represent the same things that, I mean, there's, there's, as, as Dr. Nixon was saying, there's more to the tale. Both the ORC study and our own numbers show that there's a difference in experience between the secondary schools, middle and high, and the elementary schools, for example. There are two completely different personnel environments. And so that, things like that need to be taken into account. Also, these numbers, as Dr. Helen Nixon also is saying, should not be a gotcha. It should be a beginning point of a discussion of particular interest to, to myself as I look through theirs, is where are the success stories? And are those exportable to other places as well, too?
Yeah, I would add, one of the, the appendices we have that I would encourage you to review, the, the age attrition statewide is also, it's an indicator. It seems to be consistent as a retention challenge. So, you know, teachers under the age of 30, I mean, it's, it's better than the number we stated, but about 20% exit. And the reasons that the, the research shows us that is, is some are leaving the profession for frustration, and, and others are just searching for a better fit. So, yeah.
And Ms. McLaughlin mentioned earlier, our work with the Society for Human Resource Management. So we are actively, Sean McDonald and I have had, in the last two months, we've had two phone conferences with them. We're trying to build liaisons and relationships with our local SHRM. We're there going to do some free professional development for my HR staff, but then also to be on hand for us for future HRC meetings because they have lots of different content experts. But one thing that they've shared is that, to, to Abrah's point earlier about teachers under 30, they talk a lot about the, just employment trends overall with millennial workforce, and that one of those characteristics is whether it's, I'm overwhelmed or I just want to try something different. The teacher who, who came into the profession in 1985 versus this past, you know, five years ago, just generationally, you should not expect that they would want, they would have a 30-year teaching career where that might have been a trend a while ago. And so that's one of the things that our SHRM folks have, have just kind of given us food for thought around. How do you, so if I'm not going to be a teacher for 30 years, how do I have a conversation with you about what other careers are there in K-12 for you? So whether it's, I want to be a curriculum specialist, or I'd like to work in the central office, or I'm a teacher and I would like to maybe try HR, or I have a math background and I think I might want to work in finance. So how do we leverage those conversations, showing folks a trajectory of a career that's a non-traditional path, but still in K-12?
I, I'm out of time, but I just want to speak, I just want to speak to that just for one second, and I won't take a go back. I think we would be so far ahead of other industries. Many of us were talking about, we have children who are millennials, whose careers are not being mentored, not being, you know, and if we, as a educational system, could do that, we would rebuild our, our workforce in ways that would benefit society in general. So that's really exciting for you to talk about.
Yeah, it's taking that pipeline philosophy and applying it in new ways. Yeah.
Thank you. I have Ms. Strauss followed by Ms. Schultz, and then Mr. Moon. But before we do that, I have been neglectful in not introducing all of the wonderful members of the HRC who are in the audience. So if I could ask all of the members of the HRC to please stand so we can recognize you, I'd appreciate that.
Brian was also here, yeah. Brian Wiley.
Well, some left because of our timing, but I do very much appreciate their dedication throughout the year and being here tonight, as well as yours. So thank you very much. So with that, Ms. Strauss followed by Ms. Schultz.
Thank you. And I'm, I'm just going to sort of share some assumptions as to what, where we're going with this, that what you're looking at are more the human relations side of teaching. It's not the tools for teaching. Now, there was curriculum, curriculum guides, pacing, what have you. It's more the building of a team and the human beings who are working together with the children. Is that correct?
Part of the reasoning for that is because the challenge that we saw, both consistent with the literature and what we were hearing, is that culture in the building and leadership were more significant.
Right, right. So it is the human relations part of it. I would also, I know that, that we tend to assume that the least stable staff is in our high-need school, and I would like to challenge that because I find this year, two of the principals who are recognized outstanding principals, were from very high-need schools. They happen to be the Trainsville district. I was very proud of them. And not only the outstanding principals, but they were, they've been very good at hiring and creating teams because sometimes it, it necessitates a turnover in order to put a team that, that shares vision. And in both of these schools, extremely high-need schools. And I have some other schools that are very hard to staff and keep people there, not because of the children, and not because of the leadership of the, of the principal, but sometimes the extreme participation of the, of the parents. So that can also create an unusual environment that makes it very hard to keep that school stable. So in, I have a quick question on slide eight that has the FCPs retention data. Is the, is the slide just before that? It doesn't have a key. So I am, that's it. The dotted black line signifies what?
That was the baseline data.
The baseline data. So does this say that we are better at retaining? Yes, okay, that's, okay. And then in the next slide where we have the A through T, we have, obviously, the schools have the highest retention and then kind of the lowest. Can you say anything about, I'm assuming there's a whole lot in between? What is the average retention rate? And can you comment on this particular slide? Because you picked the top and the bottom.
We don't have an average.
We can go back.
We can go back and look at.
But that's in the ORC report.
Yeah, all of that. And so we can, as a follow-up question, put that in writing for you.
Okay.
And if I, if I could just add that the committee was provided a spreadsheet, which was very useful, and did individually identify the schools for the period from, I believe, 2014 through 2016. It provided good information of, looking through the rearview mirror. But as far as specific averages and everything else that we've got, we didn't have anything updated to, to work with. And so that's part of what we were trying to ask for with the data collection, to be able to have something that's a little more robust, a little bit more systematic, and something that goes deeper, that looks at trends rather than focuses on a single year.
Right, yeah. Because I was going to say, we need stuff that is, that is truly current. And then my last question is, at least it's my understanding, in special education, which has the, the greatest problem with just a shortage of teachers nationwide and in Virginia, and that tends to be the area in which we have unfilled positions, correct? That's, that has been the trend. And the question is, for very high-needs children, which has nothing to do with FRM, ESOL, what have you, but children that come to us with huge needs, is that where the greatest shortage is?
Sorry. Our recruiters, and he can talk specifically about the work that HR does recruiting the special education teachers.
And particularly special education, working with children with very, very high needs, very challenging needs.
Good evening. I'm Dean Brooks, recruitment administrator.
Yes, it's on.
Okay. In regards to recruitment of special education teachers or staff, we've worked collaboratively with the, our colleagues and DSS in terms of trying to identify additional locations to go and strategies in terms of increased advertisement and things like that, to try to expand our pool for potential candidates for teaching, teachers of special education students. Some of those efforts have been to even open the window for hiring for special education teachers much earlier. This past year, we started offering contracts or recruitment contracts in the area of special education in October. It's our hope that that's ongoing throughout the year in a way to try to expand and increase that opportunity towards hiring of special education teachers.
And I guess my question is, I would, you know, I would recommend that we pay special attention to the needs of those teachers and what do they feel that they need to be able to sustain their classroom challenges? I, I do hear that, and even in some of very high-achieving but high-FRM schools and what I've visited, it is still a challenge for those teachers. They're wonderful, but it is a challenge. So how do we support those teachers better?
So part of the conversations that we've been having with our region assistant superintendents are around the coaching and mentoring conversations that principals and assistant principals need to be having, the, the check-ins that they're doing with their teams, formal observations, informal observations, collaborative walkthroughs, opportunities to have, you know, touch bases with their own teachers. I mean, those are the kind of structures that we are hoping that administrative teams and leadership teams in, at the school site are doing and looking out for the new teachers. I mean, there's an onboarding and orientation process that obviously happens in HR. It's very transactional. We want to make sure you're getting paid, all the compliance training is done. So there's a very natural onboarding piece that will happen in HR. But there's also a very special onboarding process that will happen at the school site. How are the new teachers, new-to-Fairfax teachers received in the schools? You know, what are those experiences that they're having? How are they being welcomed into the school? And above and beyond that, if I'm a principal in a school and, and I mean, there's an onboarding and orientation process that obviously happens in HR. It's very transactional. We want to make sure you're getting paid, all the compliance training is done. So there's a very natural onboarding piece that will happen in HR. But there's also a very special onboarding process that will happen at the school site. How are the new teachers, new to Fairfax teachers, received in the schools? You know, what are those experiences that they're having? How are they being welcomed into the school? And above and beyond that, if I'm a principal in a school and I'm running a particularly difficult program, I want to make sure that I'm asking the teacher, are you feeling supported? What can I do to help you? In our evaluation system, for those teachers that are in their evaluation cycle, they're having goal-setting conversations with their principals, they're doing reflection pieces. And my hope is that as a result of those conversations, the reflection pieces and the goal-setting, that the leaders are listening to what the teachers are saying and helping them to build their capacity and identify their growth areas. And then where there is need for improvement, that they're using the colleague assistance program that is offered through HR, but also through Kathleen Waltz and her team and OPLFE, the Office of Professional Learning and Family Engagement. The resource teacher positions that they have, where we deploy master teachers out to help those teachers that they need, and maybe not waiting until there's a sign of trouble. If I'm a brand-new teacher and I know that I'm going to be in a challenging class, proactively contacting the CAP program or the resource teacher program and saying, let's just put these supports in place. So there's a space for not only the HR conversation, but the instructional piece, too. And I referenced that earlier when I mentioned that we aren't having those conversations with our colleagues now in ways that perhaps they weren't happening in the past. I mean, I haven't been here that long, and my tenure here is at eight months. But as I continue to work, you know, with Dr. Zuluaga and the region and Teresa Johnson, we're having these conversations. And so sometimes it's about being reminded, and it's about leveraging that evaluation system so that it's not just about evaluation, but it's about professional growth.
I was going to say, it's my observation in the school, just a real quick one. I have watched principals who have challenging programs in their buildings, and when those principals know the children by name, understand how to de-escalate, and are there in the classroom helping the teacher, it really builds a team.
Relationships.
Thank you, Ms. Strauss. Ms. Schultz?
So, no, I'm just, I'm trying to navigate because the board docs document does not align up exactly with the document here. First of all, I was the HRC liaison last year, although Brian Wiley left and Steve Fumiano, my appointee, is here. I do want to acknowledge how hard this work was to start. First of all, it was a new committee. The workload, trying to get, you know, your arms around like, you know, a greased bear, you know, practically. And how to get access to the data, what data access, was it analyzed? All was very difficult and not a fully-staffed committee. So this is, you know, this is very difficult. I agreed to carry this over last year, and Megan picked up the baton with the team this year. I want to try to, because there's a lot sort of in here, but I want to pull out a few things. At the bottom of, it's page, it's page five on the actual report, which is page six of the PDF. It's the first table. It's titled Implement Specific Measures That Empower and Respect the Teacher's Voice. Over on the right-hand side, there's a couple, and it goes over onto the next page, I think. There's a few things that I think are significant. Employee engagement survey results demonstrate 40% disagree or strongly disagree with high staff morale in high-turnover schools. Teachers lack a venue where their voice and input is solicited while having needs met to support students in the building. That, and the third bullet, input from teachers suggests that exit rates are due to many factors unrelated to pay, with respect being top of the list. National studies show there's a very scant relationship between pay and happiness in the job. This is significant. They are not feeling respected. And if you slide forward into page, page eight, page eight, no, bottom of page seven on mine, about 20% of the teachers in high-turnover schools versus 7% low-turnover disagree strongly or strongly disagree that they enjoy working with school leadership. So you're looking at a 300-fold increase, you know, between a low turnover and a high turnover. These are indications that we know that there's something wrong. Then we have another takeaway where we have things like pregnancy discrimination. Teachers report bullying retaliation and lack of fair expectations and treatment. To me, as a school board member in eight years, this is the number-one problem, is that teachers feel either disrespected or bullied by a peer, by administrator in the building, and they don't know how to resolve it. And that's, I almost think this is why HRC came into being. It is the, it's like one of the most heart-wrenching calls or texts or private messages or whatever I get when an employee is like at their wit's end. And I almost grieve for them that they have to come into a building or a location daily, and they're distraught. And that's the mechanism. I don't know how we create that as a charge for this, but having some access to creating a vehicle for employees to be able to share in a fair environment, the feedback about what's happening, I think will actually reduce our high turnover. It will save us money. It will make happier employees. And, you know, we don't have, and it's repeatedly said through this report, we do not have a global retention problem. 93% is not a retention problem. You have some retention problem in some places, in some fields, in some schools. That's the key on data.
That's the nugget.
That's the nugget. Oh, I'm out of my three minutes.
About a minute ago. That's okay.
Okay. Definitely a million percent I have a go back.
Okay. Thank you very much, Ms. Schultz. Mr. Moon?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you for the presentation. There's a lot in your report. I appreciate that. You know, when you read so many reports and all the reading materials, you sometimes forget where I read and what I read, or whether what I read is relevant to tonight's presentation or not. So, and also, if I missed hearing your, part of your presentation related to this, please forgive me. And my question goes to any one of you three up there. Does it have a page number? A through T on your presentation with a score with a disparate percentage in turnover rate? Are they, do they include both elementary and secondary scores?
Yeah. Yeah, and we looked at, we segmented them, too, and looked at it. So it's still consistent. There are some variations in certain variables, but yeah, this is still representative of the data even when it's segmented.
Okay, good. That was the first thing I wanted to know. But more importantly, I think, I think, I think I have heard, I heard this, high poverty schools tend to have higher turnover rate, lower retention. And there are exceptions. That's why we call them star scores, correct? And I also seem to remember reading from somewhere that retention, there's at least a correlation between retention and school culture and school leadership. But now my question is, whether do you think there's a correlation between poverty and school leadership and school culture?
I'm sorry, I was just digging up the report that I had in here. And one of the appendices is a report that I put together from the data that we had through 2016, and I added some additional elements that wasn't in there, trying to parse out what factors were at play. And so the, and so some of the biggest issues, I mean, we're looking at gender balance in school, what I termed program intensity, which was special ed plus ESOL, free and reduced lunch rates, absentee rates, mobility rates, and personal space violations, which weapons and offenses against people in there. And I took, what I tried to do is I tried to identify each one of them. Each one of them on their own had varying relationships to what was happening in there. And I need to be careful to say, there are two caveats with this. First of all, this was backwards-looking, so we were using older data. And number two, we don't want to confuse causation with correlation. So we don't want to imply that one causes another. What I think was fair to say is that these are things that seem to be happening at the same time. And some of these things are also happening in tandem with each other as well. So what, in the report that we had, I did this, it was on a snow day, I had a lot of extra time. I said, let me just pick on the high schools, and let me just take a look at what was happening in there. So I tried to answer some of the questions that you were talking about. It's not meant to answer questions. I think it's meant more to lead to other questions, to find out what's happening, and to find out what is, what is the environment that these schools are working with. But I did see a positive correlation when I started blending these things together, that there are schools that are facing tougher headwinds in retention than other schools. And then I compared their actual results through 2016 to those par values to find out which ones were beating the expectations and which ones were coming lower than the expectations in order to be able to, as I said before, to try to begin a conversation, to try to find best practices, or to try to find areas where we might need to be concerned.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Bambaka. What I was trying to get at is this, if there is some relationship between poverty, poverty and school culture or school leadership, school leadership, because it is hard for me to imagine that poverty affecting a leadership itself. Poverty affecting the relationship between, for example, between teachers or teacher administrators. But there may be some other thing which may be resorted from poverty that's affecting school culture.
I think that the short answer to this is that there are schools that require greater type, greater degrees of leadership and different types of leadership, as has been mentioned before, the ability to know people by name, to be able to de-escalate, to recognize the needs of that diversity, and be able to respond appropriately to that. There are plenty of environments where each school has its different challenges, as we heard before about many environments where you have parents that are hyper-involved and with what's going on, creating those special sets of challenges. Each school's going to be different in those, in those different areas. But my personal experience, having been, spent my entire career in high-need schools, is that there's a special type of leadership that's required for it. And if a person's not up to that challenge, then you're going to have difficulties.
Okay, thank you. But I'm sure I yield my 58 seconds to my colleagues.
I appreciate that yield. Thank you very much, Mr. Moon. I have Mr. Wilson.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, guys, for the hard work on the committee. And I'm not exactly sure to, I'm having a hard time thinking about how I want to approach this. I think I'm going to need a go back. I think I'm going to start with the presentation slides that has the three bars, because I specifically had a question that follows up on Ms. Strauss's question, is how am I supposed to interpret this chart? What does the dash line mean?
So I think that chart was taken from the Goal III report, and the key is not there. So we can reissue this slide with the key to demonstrate that.
The purpose on our part was to just suggest that you can't really find much out from this. It's more so the disparities when you go into the nitty-gritty, at least, you know, as the committee, but.
So it was a little bit hard for you as the committee to sort of interpret this chart as well, it sounds like. Is that what you're saying?
Right, and it's not particularly useful. Because, I mean, what do you get when you know that, all right, it's over 90% retention? Great. What does that mean?
Okay, thank you. And then on the, a couple of slides forward, there's some HRC recommendations with regards to retention practices. And Helen, we've asked this in the past about exit surveys of teachers who are leaving. Do we conduct them now? And how do we collect that data?
Yes, those are, am I correct? There's an email link that's sent to someone who separates from us, and they, it's voluntary. They don't have to fill it out. They do fill it out, and then it comes back to HR.
So what is the return on?
I cannot speak to the exact percentage of return rate regarding the exit surveys. I know it is administered, and it's voluntary in terms of separating employee, completing it.
That's consistent with what's been discussed before. And I was hopeful that there might have been a change, but it sounds like that's the same. So two things jumped out at me, Dr. Braybrand. One is the, in the report, I think it's in the report, or maybe it's in the slide presentation in the, in the, in the page that shows the sort of, all the words, overwhelmed jumps out as by far the largest word on that page. And that actually shows up in a number of bullets throughout this, this report, as well as, and actually, Abra mentioned this during her presentation, this issue of administrative bullying. And I just, I'd like to know sort of, how does the staff and superintendent react to that piece of information?
Well, first, let me just say on the overwhelmed, the overwhelmed is one of the first things I heard when I arrived. That's part of the work we've done with the strategic plan to go from 38 desired outcomes to eight and concentrate with two-year windows on certain sets of results. Administrative bullying has no place, bullying of any kind has no place in Fairfax County public schools. I said it at the leadership conference. I'm saying it this evening. And when I become aware of instances, and this is part of the problem, even though I was here, I know a lot of people, I don't know everyone, is creating a culture where, as Abra was saying and Leonard were saying, where people can step forward and feel there's someone they can reach out to. Again, maybe not a gotcha, but help to go, this needs to be addressed, correction needs to happen. Again, depending on the severity of what the bullying is, you've got to listen and find out what the story, and the story may lead to different outcomes. But I can assure you that when I am becoming aware that something like that is happening, we are taking decisive action. I think a problem, and teacher associations have said, is Scott, you may, it isn't that we're not saying that when you know you're not doing something, but you don't know what you don't know. And one of the things here in the nugget, back to, you know, where Elizabeth was going, one of the first things she pulled out, which was about FAC. Schools lack consistency in how they set, include teacher input. Union's voice that FACs do not set an agenda. I'm aware there's some schools that FAC hasn't met all year. The REG has been around since I became an intern 25 years ago. There's no excuse to not have FAC meeting in your school. And then the issue about who sets the agenda, of course, the faculty sets the agenda. It's called the Faculty Advisory Committee, but that's not happening. So we've got to do better, and it's the Fairfax thing, FAC, FAC. People have in their head what FAC is. We've got to elucidate best practices of what is a highly functioning FAC in a school. So I think part of it is, and our support for teacher mentoring that you all mentioned is true, we have, we have fallen short in supporting our principals with the mentoring and support about what to know. Only because I knew through my Fairfax years, I served, I was the FAC chair as a teacher, that I knew when I became principal, the FAC had to be respected. Because teachers were complaining at my high school at the time, FAC is not meeting. It's only meeting once or twice a year. The REG says five times, what's going on? Why aren't the minutes being published? You need to answer those. So we've had things that we think are in place, and they're doing well in many places. But the problem is our own oversight of when it's not going well. We're not overs, we're not having enough monitoring of it, and people aren't feeling comfortable yet for a place to come forward and share it. And we've, we're going to fix it. We're going to fix it. I think we're starting to make progress, but we need to make more. And I'm exploring with staff some additional ideas to take this piece of bullying head-on.
Helen, the next, the very first recommendation is employ best practices for teacher retention. Is that not happening currently in FCPS?
So when we talk about what the best practices are around teacher retention, that was the purpose of the committee, to try and identify what, what those things are and which schools are, what are the schools doing that are having success? And one of the- And one of the things, one of the conversation starters that we've had is around teacher engagement. We know that actively engaged teachers, even if they are working in a very difficult school, if they're actively engaged and feel that they have a voice and have autonomy and someone's invested in their professional development and their ideas are valued, those were some of the things that we identified as what those best practices are. But how do you operationalize them? And how do you identify where they are and in which schools, which schools are finding success with that? And then being able to have some kind of venue or exchange for how you professionally develop that in someone? How do you have those conversations? So, for example, if we have an administrative team that wants to do some professional development around engagement, around giving feedback, what are the mechanisms for that? And so, our getting together and prioritizing some of that work and working with our partners in OPLFE to see what kind of workshop, three-hour workshop on employee engagement, what would that look like? That's what this is about. So, when you look at, for example, best practice in retention from an HR department, what does HR do? Well, we make sure that we have benefits for our employees. We make sure we have a wellness program for our employees. We make sure that they're compensated on time. We make sure that the scales are updated and that we're doing compensation studies. So, those are some things that happen in HR. But then, how does what we know about engaging employees and translate to schools? And we know we have to have a venue and a mechanism for working more collaboratively with the schools so that we're not so separated.
I appreciate that. I'm going to push back just a little bit.
Sure.
Because their charge actually was to identify factors that contribute to retention challenges, and the factors, the practices that are, that improve retention. They weren't charged with determining best practices. That's actually their first recommendation is to implement. Fairfax County needs to implement best practices. So, and I think, as I read this report, it's a bit of an indictment, actually, on the HR retention practices in Fairfax County, and also an indictment of the ability of even one of our advisory committees to receive data that they're requesting. Throughout this report, there's bullet points after bullet point after bullet point. We received incomplete data. We received no data. We were getting bounced around from person to person. And I think that is not a best practice, and I think we need to take this to heart. I think this is a fantastic first effort by this committee, because I think it highlights both some failings within FCPS, and frankly, some failings of this board to hold staff accountable. And I've been a part of this board, so I share that responsibility. But we have got to push back gently again and again, because this issue, and I think everyone on, all of my colleagues would agree, you're not going to have a great school unless you've got great teachers, and you need to have a great principal leading the way in that school. And we've got, so we've got to have a system that supports them, protects them, encourages them, provides professional development. And I think these remarks and bullets really need to be unpacked, and we need to have further discussions.
Thank you, Mr. Wilson. Absolutely, Ms. Nash.
Yeah, thank you. So, just, I mean, to Helen's credit, or Dr. Nixon's credit, I do want to just point out, there's a robust HR support program in place that was informational to us, and that we attached to the report, actually, in the summary of our meetings, one of the bullets is a report by Dr. Nixon to the committee about all the initiatives, the wonderful initiatives that she's leading. What I want to point out, and that's a critical point for us to kind of walk away with, is that the disconnect in why we're seeing some of these challenges is not necessarily housed in the HR office. And that might be counterintuitive. But to her point about the needing collaboration and communication across departments, you know, as we pointed out, challenges of teachers reporting or feeling safe reporting, you know, having peer review mechanisms that take their complaints seriously, those are areas where I would recommend we focus more, because those then will allow HR to respond, and hopefully, by having, you know, a structured process to address those complaints, that, you know, we can move forward with them. But I, you know, I'd be remiss not to kind of point that out.
And I just wanted to add, with respect to the data, there were areas in there where we did have difficulty with some of the data. There are different things that one could ask, you know, was some of the data deliberately withheld? No, none of us think that at all. Was there any sort of institutional reticence that was happening? No, I don't think that was an issue either. I think it was just a matter of saying, what, you know, we need to be clear with the data, what's being presented. We need something, the initial spreadsheet that was provided to the committee, even before I came on board and Steve and Pat massaged at first, was very, very helpful. But we needed something like that, that was robust, that was in electronic form, not in paper form, something that was searchable, something that we can go ahead and add data to as well. So, what we needed was not, I mean, I think the data that we're getting was well-intentioned, but we needed something that was, something more usable for us. And so, I might have been one of the ones who authored some of the points in there about the data. It's not saying that we felt we were being let down. It is saying that there are things that we can do better, and things that would help us as a committee do our work as well.
Yeah, and forgive me for being a little blunt on this, but some of that just didn't exist, and wasn't necessarily a failing on HR. I should add that part of the reason why there wasn't a report last year, and the transition was a little bit less than smooth, is that there was a new hire. So, Dr. Nixon was newer in this year. But the observation here that was an entire goal, you know, one of our four main recommendations, is that structure, like establishing a system in place for that data collection and analysis. Because, just a slight reminder, we got lucky that we had some people with statistical and mathematical expertise to help us with the analysis, but completely volunteered their time. And that's not necessarily, you know, committee members' role, but...
Thank you. So, I'm going to take my turn, and then we'll have some go-backs. And very much appreciate the report. It got to us somewhat late. I think that it was delivered at four o'clock this afternoon, so I haven't had a chance to really read in great detail every bullet point, but I do appreciate the depth in which you all explored it. I look forward to unpacking it a bit more. Some of the things that I think are important for us to better understand, because when you look at this report, this chart, and you look at the overall numbers of retention, it looks good. But as we all know, it's the devil's in the details, and it's on a case-by-case basis. So, what I think would be very helpful is to better understand what sorts of systems we need to put in place to ensure that we have fidelity of implementation across all of our buildings. The other thing that I think is important to understand is the synergy between this report and the report we're going to get from MSAOC next, because they really unpack much of the data on retention, recruitment and retention of teachers of color. And it's a challenge for us here in Fairfax County. Frankly, it's a challenge across the country. But we don't use challenges as an excuse for not getting something done. And so, the cross between the two is how do we retain people? And there has been a significant body of work, which has been done both by Harvard and Boston University and Berkeley, so all three, and led primarily by Dr. Travis Bristol on how you address the retention, the recruitment and retention. And in that work, he really talks about the importance of cohorts and mentoring programs, as well as ensuring that when we have our job responsibilities for teachers, that we don't predetermine that because you are a male, or you are a male who is also black, then you don't get the disciplinary enroll, because that has a significant impact on the ability to retain teachers in the first five years. And so, it's really unpacking, what are the best practices across the various academic institutions that have come out? And then, are we using that, those best practices in how we conduct our own business? And so, I think that's going to be important, as well as the data and context is really important, because I have to push back a bit on Mr. Wilson, that what we've just heard is that it wasn't necessarily incomplete data, it was data that wasn't in the format or wasn't readily available. And so, if we can better clarify or define what we're looking for, then we may not have it immediately available to us, but we do have the capabilities and we should expect from the superintendent that we will get the data to be able to contribute to our work. So, my time is out, so I'm not going to take more than that, and I'm going to go to our go-backs. And I have Ms. McLaughlin, Ms. Schultz, Ms. Darnak Kofax, and Mr. Wilson on go-backs. And I'm going to limit go-backs to one and a half minutes each, because it is 8:20 now, and we do have quite a bit, we have another report. Does that make sense? Did you want to respond, Ms. Nash?
Yeah, yeah, I just had an addition. One thing that came to our attention at the end that we weren't able to explore, Mr. Fiumano actually brought it up to us, was a correlation that exists between what certification criteria are required, or what standardized testing, you know, exists for teachers, and the presence of minority teachers. So, that there may be an argument, again, correlation, causation, it requires investigation. But there may be an argument to be made that there are factors like that, that we may not even be aware of, limiting teachers of color, minorities from becoming teachers. So, that's a consideration, that there's a potential bias in these tests and whatnot. And then, when you mentioned the systems that we have in place, again, just towards Goal C, because I'd really harp on the fact that whether it's, you know, data that doesn't exist or not, we didn't see anything that indicated that it's there. And certainly, if it's there, that it's not necessarily being analyzed or consistently reviewed with relation to this teacher retention question, so...
Excellent. And I would point you in the direction of, the governor just signed a bill this week changing some of the certification language, so if you're interested in that, that just happened.
Thanks.
Okay. So, I have Ms. McLaughlin, and Ms. Darnak Kofax has chosen not to take her go-backs. So, it'll be Ms. McLaughlin, Ms. Schultz, and Mr. Wilson.
So, quickly, I wanted to go back because I wanted to emphasize again that this is not about the advisory committee doing central administration staff work. It's identifying how we, as the 10th largest school system, can do better. So, what I'm hoping is that this has helped us identify that when you have high variation of pockets of excellence in retention and pockets of challenges, or high achieving in retention versus low performing in retention, this is what should be done every single year. Data analysis run by ORC, brought over to the leadership team and the RASs, and then, just like with Project Momentum, it's what supports in place do we need to help these schools? We do that, and we will be a world-class public school system that I believe is possible, but for too long, we haven't done work with intentionality. And so, one of the notes that I was making is, it's allowing our data to derive systematic action. And so, that, to me, was one of the most important takeaways. And I also really do believe that it goes to having that analysis. Like this chart here, I'm so glad you included it, because as I shared with Dr. Bray Brand as a sidebar, this regrettably is so high-level, it tells you nothing, absolutely nothing. But when you actually disaggregate the data the way this committee did, that's where you find your 30%, you know, turnover rate versus your 5%. And I really appreciate that the committee emphasized that this is not about necessarily a causality of poverty and challenges in schools means you have retention problems. As the research has shown nationally, and as you all pointed out, in studying these schools, it comes down to leadership and culture in the building. And we have heard this so much from our employees over the years, so, and it's not always about principal leadership, too. It's being overwhelmed. So, there you go. I will then just say this, Madam Chair, we keep running into this, that getting backlog, we could never have done this in an hour. And I really don't want to see this a year from now, that this school board is giving one hour to our advisory committee to talk about was one of the most important things we've got to be doing.
I agree with you, but we're giving it two hours.
But we are now behind because we were only scheduled for one.
Correct, but let's continue on. So, Ms. Schultz, please?
If we could bring up page 13 of the actual report on the screen, and this doesn't go to my time, so stop the time. No, see, this is, there's, I know, but I actually went to the one that was given to me as the Google, as the, right. So, it says page 13 at the bottom of mine. It's a table. Go up a little bit, maybe go up a little bit, maybe the pages are off. Okay.
No, no, go down. Yeah, yeah, it's right under it, the next page.
No, I'm looking for a table.
Yeah, yeah, go down.
Yes. Oh, how is that, oh my gosh, that's like live hiding, I'm glad I didn't write anything.
That's why I Googled that.
All right.
No, but it's only suggesting, so it's fine.
So, first of all, don't give us, I'm just going to say, don't start my time, do not give us live update Google, like, when you give us a report, you have to give us the final report. There's no more changes. Okay. So, now my time starts. This, the, in the bottom right-hand box...
It's a good picture, though.
In the bottom right-hand box, that is the most important statement in this entire report, in my opinion. Teacher retention disparities cannot be addressed without proper understanding of the issue itself requiring data investigation. Then, the two quotes up above. ORC is wondering if, HARC is wondering if ORC is the only data analysis, and then the need for, the very problem that Mr. Wilson was trying to highlight, the fact that staff did not have this data in the first place is, in effect, the problem. Because if we didn't have the data, then we weren't using the data to inform decision-making, to inform, you know, how PD is done in disparate schools, or what, why there are disparities, and/or are there pockets of excellence. So, this is the nugget. And what I wrote is, and we keep having this issue, and Dr. Presidio's back there and very kind with his words last night, you can do all the research you want, you can do all the data collection you want, if you don't have effective analysis, it doesn't mean anything. And so, getting the data and helping you, help your LT, help the principals in the building, understand, having teacher retention, by the way, our new teacher retention is just as good, if not better, than national. I'm not worried about new teacher retention. We're right on the mark. Some people get into teaching and say, "That's not for me. I don't want to retain them. I don't want to, I don't want to make it so lucrative that I golden handcuff them into a career that they don't want." But teacher retention in a building, for a long time, isn't always a good thing. You can get calcification into a building that doesn't promote PD and doesn't promote personal growth. And so, this is just so key, and I'm grateful for the work that you all did, that Brian and Steve did. But the other thing is, this is an HARC committee, and so, this looked heavily at teachers. We have these same problems in the support staff. And so, I don't want to lose sight on going forward, that we have so many employees that are not teachers, or not teachers that are in unions, that we have to be able to open this lens to the non-teacher employee who's experiencing these difficulties on a day-to-day basis.
Thank you, Ms. Schultz. And Mr. Wilson, you'll have the last word.
I doubt it, but thank you, Madam Chair. On slide eight, at least on my hard copy here, there's a bullet that says, "In-state specific measures to protect pregnant teachers." Could you just elaborate on what those are?
So, we didn't have sufficient data, or, in fact, authority to look into this, but we did receive reports that there are claims, and, you know, that's up to the school board, I mean, we can't comment, obviously, of discrimination in a particular school, but in multiple cases. And the student population, through their student council and whatnot, feel strongly that this is because of them being pregnant, and that potentially, you know, they're going to leave, and so they're disadvantaged and whatnot. Again, we can't comment, but that, and one of our committee members was very passionate about this, brought this up many times, and it's indicative, and I actually, just on an anecdote... And it's indicative, and I actually just, you know, anecdotally had spoken to some students who went to that school. It's something that's on students' radar, and I just, you know, I wanted to put it in to provide an opportunity for investigation.
It's not just one school.
Okay, and then...
To our knowledge, sorry.
Two, I'm in the report, actually, so two pages further in the report, on page 10 of the report, you talk about consider different pay structures for more intensive demands. I wonder whether you could elaborate on that bullet.
Which one, I'm sorry?
Must be a little bit farther down. It's consider different payment structures for more intensive demands.
Right. Okay, so thank you, yes, I want to highlight this. So I mentioned that other divisions do this, where when there is more need or a more demanding, more likelihood of exit, that they incentivize teachers by increasing salaries. So for example, special needs teachers, potential opportunity there to give a higher salary for certain, you know, challenges that they face, as opposed to just your average teacher. That's what that's referring to.
And if I could add, there's an existing mechanism with the additional time, the AT scale, that could be used in order to be able to recognize teachers who are dealing with these things. I think, I'm not saying that that's the solution, but there are mechanisms already in place where if the funding was available, then those teachers in high needs, high demands, high intensity schools could be provided that extra time or provided that extra resource in order to be able to do that. In some cases, the extra time is even more valuable than the extra salary, but an AT scale opportunity provides one mechanism that could work with that. We did come up with a definitive answer for that. You can't just pay people to do a better job. I mean, in the sense that it has to be structured very deliberately.
Okay, and then finally, Madam Chair, I just want to clarify, when I was bringing up the comments in the bullets about, you know, there are comments that say we were disappointed and we received incomplete, and then actually in the summary page, on page 12, it actually says, "Not only is much of the reporting ad hoc, but in many cases conclusions are buried in pages of overwhelming data. Quantity supplants quality and can make conclusions difficult to make or critique." The point here is really, it's a point of transparency, which I know Dr. Braybrand has focused on and focused on, but we just have to keep redoubling our efforts. The public deserves to be able to get information in a way that's accessible. And I know it's a difficult process because we are such a big system with so many different programs going on, but we constantly have to turn back to this so that if our committees are telling us that, then you've got to know that the public feels the same way when they go onto the website to try to find out information.
Dr. Braybrand, do you want to respond?
I think I just want to make a comment because I know we're wrapping up. In 25 years, first, we had no metrics, something, when I started, there were no metrics. Then there was something called SOLs. Then someone came and there were 10 targets. That person left, and then we revamped and we created three goals. And then that person left and we created the Ignite Plan. And one of the things with turnover is getting consistent metrics. We've taken the strategic plan, we've reduced it to eight desired outcomes, we have metrics associated with the outcomes, and for the first time this fall, the school improvement plan for each school will be aligned with the strategic plan. The school improvement plan document was aligned with the old strategic plan from two predecessors before me. Until you have system and school alignment, we're not going to have the operational and instructional excellence that we want. But we are moving in the last two years rapidly in that direction. The other problem we've had in the system is, we have had data, but it has been siloed in the department or under the area of responsibility for where that data is. Leonard knows, we were together as teachers on the FAA Board over 20 years ago. And we've siloed data or we've been reluctant to share data because we didn't want the community to come whack us on the head and say, look, we've fallen short. We are becoming more transparent, and we're going to begin to use data to help us better collaborate inside the organization and outside the organization. And I do think that's going to help. We even, by the way, I just feel like I'm moved to tell you, we've updated, we've had the strategic planning night now for several years. I've been here two years and kept looking over sometimes at the clock, and then I would look at our FCPS strategic goals, which were the old ones from two superintendents ago. Jeff Plattenberg has given us now, you can see the strategic plan goals, student success, caring culture, premier workforce and resource stewardship. And it cost me $450, just for those who own the financial piece. But I thought it was important to do.
There's got a lot of return on investment for that $450.
A lot of ROI. But the alignment is one of the great challenges in a system this large, and I really do think we are beginning to break down the data stovepipes and the culture around who owns it. Because data's power, right? Data can be power in whose hands, and there is going to be, and there continues to be greater collaboration. And I think we're moving in the right direction. We still have work to go, and I look forward to. And as you heard these folks say, and earlier in the last couple of nights, that's a whole nother thing. It's the last two weeks of the school year and we pile all this in when we're trying to listen and have our team, who's trying to take their first break, get this. We can continue to partner and figure out how we use this for the cycle of continuous improvement. And we learned a lot tonight, and I want to thank them, Abra and Leonard, who I both know, and all the folks behind this for doing this work. It's going to help us to continue to get better.
So thank you so much for all of your hard work and the work of the committee. It is greatly appreciated. And just so you know, the approach to our advisory committee reports is that now that you all have made these recommendations, staff will provide a response to the recommendations. And so then that will be shared with the board. The other thing is, please put your thoughts into how to craft the charge for this committee for next year, because we will be adopting charges for each of the committees at our last board meeting in July.
All right.
Dr. Braybrand.
Just 10 seconds, because it's here and it wasn't planned, and I'm an off-the-cuff guy. Dean here, this is the man in the organization that brought the idea to have the substitute hiring forums for our furloughed federal workers, and I want to thank you, Dean, for your leadership and gear resources.
Thank you. So we'll take a five-minute break, and MSAOC will join us at the table, but you're welcome to stay.